Welcome everyone to Partnering for Economic Recovery in Senegal. We will begin in a few seconds.
So, welcome everyone to the third and the final installation of the Corporate Council on Africa Partnering for Economic Recovery Series. I'm Viviane Bakayoko, a member of the CCA Board and the head also of City Cote d'Ivoire and West and Central Africa Lead for City Global Subsidiary Group. This week, the CCA has focused on pandemic recovery effort in Morocco and Nigeria. And we are ending the week with Senegal, a country who has certainly been at the forefront of the COVID-19 response. From their innovative COVID-19 test kit, to the extensive public communication effort and the focus on the strengthening e-commerce platform, it is no wonder Senegal was recently listed number two globally for managing the pandemic by Foreign Policy Magazine. All over this crisis, we have all seen multiple economic recovery plans from various governments. Senegal itself has the Economic and Social Resilience Program, which has allocated over 1.7 billion dollars to support Senegalese people, business, and especially the health sector in managing this pandemic. As a bank, who has been in country since 1975, we confident that Senegal and the rest of the continent will be able to weather this crisis. Senegal has been a beacon of political stability and, absent COVID-19, has had significant and improving economic prospects with a focus on diversifying and deepening the economy in addition to a high level of public investment in infrastructure. Furthermore, the ingenuity of Senegal, the Senegalese population, particularly the youth, in creating solution for protecting and informing the populace are an exemplar for the long-term prospects for the country and are inspiring to us as we go through this pandemic. As Senegal and over African countries, African nation transition from response to recovery, American companies like Citi wants to be supportive of this effort and anticipate learning more about opportunity to foster greater collaboration and partnership over the continent and how the US government can be a facilitator and amplifier this connection. We look forward to the plan and the way with the second phase of the Priority Action Plan and Economic Recovery Effort from Mr. Hutt and what the US is doing to encourage entrepreneurship and support the vital human capital need needed to further this plan. Accordingly, it gives me great pleasure to introduce His Excellency, Mr. Amadou Hutt, the Minister of Economy, Planning, and International Cooperation for the Republic of Senegal. For the few of you who are not familiar with Minister Hutt, he has been in his current position since April 2019. Prior to leading the ministry, he was Vice President of the African Development Bank in the section of Power, Energy, Green Growth, and Climate Change Complex for three years and served, sorry, for four years in various role in the Senegalese government, including a special advisor to President Mackisal. He has over 20 years of experience in the financial sector with 15 years in the private sector, has an investment banker and strategic advisor, which gives me a great perspective on Senegal economic recovery from COVID-19. Minister Hutt, we welcome you.
Good morning and good afternoon, everyone. This is Flori Lazir, President and CEO of the Corporate Council on Africa. We had Minister Hutt connected just a few minutes ago, but it appears that we are disconnected now. So, Vivian, thanks for your excellent introduction. As soon as the minister, oh, here he is, he's connecting again. Minister Hutt, thank you so much. So, we ask your patience as the minister tries to get his connections. You know, technology, sometimes it's fabulous and sometimes not. But while he's doing that, I'm going to suggest that our moderator, Vivian Bakayoko, perhaps introduce our next keynote speaker from the US side, C.D. Glenn of the US Africa Development Foundation.
Sure, Flori, thanks for the floor. And so, Mr. Glenn will share. And the question was, I mean, question is to me, Mr. Glenn is going to cover that session before Minister Hutt, right? Flori?
Yes, I'm suggesting that while we're waiting for Minister Hutt to reconnect, that we go ahead and ask our other keynote speaker, Mr. Glenn, to make his remarks. And then hopefully, when he's completed with his remarks, Minister Hutt will have a good connection and he will give us his comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks, Flori. So, to the audience, Mr. Glenn bring a decade of experience working in the US government and nonprofit organization on Africa at organizations like the Peace Corps and Rockefeller Foundation. So, thank you for being here and over to you, Mr. Glenn.
Thank you. Thank you, Vivian. Good morning, everyone. Thank you to the Corporate Council on Africa under the esteemed leadership of Flori Lazir for organizing and inviting me to be a part of this important and timely discussion on Senegal's development and innovative partnership towards economic recovery and progress in this new COVID-19 world. First, let me acknowledge the Honorable Minister Amadou Hutt and the government of Senegal and your commitment, for your commitment to development and partnership. I also want to take this opportunity to congratulate the government of Senegal for its COVID-19 response, which has been hailed as one of the most effective responses in the world, thanks to the government's preparedness, quick action, and clear communication to the public. Let me also recognize the people of the Republic of Senegal for being honored just this week with the prestigious National Achievement Award from the Africa-America Institute, AAI. I would also like to acknowledge all the distinguished speakers and panelists on the program today. I look forward to hearing your views on how we can collectively facilitate transformative approaches to partnering for economic growth in Senegal and beyond. At the US African Development Foundation, we pride ourselves in doing development differently. USADF is an independent US government agency established by Congress to invest in African grassroots organizations, entrepreneurs, and small and medium-sized enterprises. Our investments promote local economic development by increasing incomes, revenues, and jobs at the local community level. USADF's participatory approach puts local voices, local realities, and local priorities first. Our approach emphasizes the need for co-creation and community-led solutions. That's why our staff across the African continent is 100% African, including all of USADF's local implementing partners throughout our 20 country offices. It is this approach that allows USADF to assist community-led development and help build resilience in fragile, conflict-prone, and post-conflict areas throughout the Sahel, Horn of Africa, and Great Lakes regions, where development actors typically find it hard to operate. Over our 40-year history, US African Development Foundation has supported African-led development that grows community enterprises by providing them with seed capital and technical assistance. And by doing so, we're creating pathways to prosperity for underserved communities that are at risk of being left behind in Africa's overall growth story. So, I've shared a bit about USADF and our development approach, but let me shift to our impact, particularly in Senegal, and how partnerships are key to our success and future direction. Over the last five years, from 2015 to 2019, USADF directly invested in more than, directly invested more than $115 million in over 1,000 African-owned and operated entities and impacted over 4 million lives. Our investments generated more than 220 million in new local economic activity in local communities. USADF's impact is evident in Senegal, where we focus our investments in agricultural cooperatives, small-scale producer groups, agricultural processors, and youth-led and women-led enterprises. Our programmatic focus in Senegal is to create pathways to prosperity for underserved communities there and doing so in partnership with the government of Senegal and others. Just almost more than a year ago, or less than a year ago, in December 2019, USADF partnered with the General Delegation for Rapid Entrepreneurship of Women and Youth, the DARE Agency, a government of Senegal-sponsored fund launched by His Excellency President Mackisal to catalyze entrepreneurship in Senegal targeting youth and women. Over the next five years, USADF and DARE will invest $20 million in Senegalese enterprises through a blended finance model by utilizing both low-interest loans and grants. The goal of this innovative grant financing model is to create a revolving fund that leads to a more sustainable pool of grant investment capital. We also want to make these Senegalese entrepreneurs and enterprises more attractive for follow-on funding from other investors and commercial lenders as they look to scale their operations. Through the government of Senegal's co-investment in its people, under this blended finance partnership, USADF can expand our activities and reach more Senegalese entrepreneurs, enterprises, and communities. The first round of matching funds totaling $106 million will allow for an initial financial investment in more than 28 medium-sized Senegalese enterprises, the majority of which are women-owned and operated. I'm happy to say that implementation of this program begins in less than a month, in October. Minister Hutt, allow me this opportunity to thank the government of Senegal for its commitment to this partnership and Senegal's economic growth and prosperity despite any challenges, the many challenges presented by COVID-19. As COVID-19 threatened investments in progress USADF had made in helping develop, grow, and scale African enterprises and African entrepreneurs, we knew we had to act quickly to support them with immediate capital assistance to address business continuity needs. So, USADF created USADF CARES, our capital for African resilience building and enterprise support initiative. Through USADF CARES, we provided approximately $3.5 million in emergency response and relief capital to nearly 350 African enterprises and entrepreneurs throughout 20 countries. This includes Senegal, where over 20 enterprises and entrepreneurs received USADF CARES Assistance Funds to help them better withstand, survive, adapt, and thrive in the face of COVID-19. Additional efforts are underway to support African enterprises in repurposing and reconfiguring their operations while encouraging innovation and partnerships in the off-grid energy sector, digitization for youth and women-led enterprises, and continued support to African small-scale farmers. USADF's COVID-19 response also includes another program, the African Resilience Initiative for Entrepreneurs, ARE. With USADF funding, in close collaboration and in close collaboration with Echo Bank, will provide financial and technical assistance to 300 African entrepreneurs impacted by COVID-19. Approximately 70% of these 300 enterprises will be women-owned. Enterprises in Senegal, along with Ghana, Cote d'Ivoire, Kenya, Nigeria, Rwanda, and Uganda in agribusiness, manufacturing, energy and renewables, as well as essential services sectors, will have the opportunity to receive up to $150,000 per firm dispersed as an interest-free loan and will receive technical support from African business development and advisory experts across the continent. Entrepreneurs are an important part of the ecosystem. They create markets where there often are none and help pave the way for further economic development. Now more than ever, we need to invest in the next generation of African business leaders and empower them with the tools they need to transform their businesses, create jobs, increase incomes, attract private investment, and ultimately impact their communities. USADF investments in Senegal do not benefit the enterprises and entrepreneurs in a vacuum. Our investments also benefit the American economy and the American consumer. USADF's enterprise focus in Africa is helping build a cadre of viable and stronger trade and investment partners for the US. Under the Prosper Africa Initiative, the US government's initiative to increase two-way trade and investment between the United States and Africa, USADF is helping African enterprises identify and be ready for the opportunity of exports to US markets. We've assisted them in strengthening their management and financial systems and in fulfilling supply orders for cashews, shaved butter cosmetics, and coffee for big American retailers such as Target, Costco, and Whole Foods. As an example for how US firms have benefited from USADF investments, several in the energy sector have also made sales of renewable energy products and inputs to our African investees. At least 24 American-owned, small- and medium-sized energy companies work with USADF and have support, and we've supported purchases of their products from and by African entrepreneurs, illustrating how USADF investments can spark and contribute to two-way trade between the US and Africa. We have a particular focus on women and women entrepreneurs, and this is in line with the WGDP Initiative, where we partner with the State Department on its Academy for Women Entrepreneurs. And starting in 2020, just this year, over the next five years, we committed to providing up to $10 million in catalytic funding to select African graduates of the Academy for Women Entrepreneurs. And Senegal is one of the key countries that we're focusing on. The US, just last week, the US government and our partners celebrated Feed the Future Week and a decade of this global food security initiative, where USADF operates in six of the 12 targeted Feed the Future countries, including Senegal, where we're helping agricultural enterprises to increase their productivity, yield, revenues, and incomes. For example, we're providing funding to YAKAR. YAKAR is an 87-member women's group specializing in rice and vegetable production in Korkajé, Senegal. The machinery and crop production training funded by USADF enabled YAKAR to improve its production quality and volume, ultimately increasing the group's annual sales revenue by 730% and providing access to food products for a village of 830 people. A women's group, again, of 87 people, now impacting the lives of almost 1,000 villagers through this catalytic support. The government's Feed the Future programs in Senegal integrate nutrition, agriculture, both to reduce poverty and combat malnutrition. These efforts also promote trade and market access, support small- and medium-sized agricultural businesses, and enable communities to take charge of their own food security. USADF is proud to be in the forefront of carrying out the Feed the Future mission in Senegal. And in closing, at USADF, we're dedicated, more dedicated than ever, in doing our part to support the development goals of the people of Senegal, in line with US government priorities and interests. We look forward to expanding our interagency agreements with African, our agreements with African governments and the private sector to reach and empower even more small- and medium-sized enterprises, community-level enterprises, and entrepreneurs in Senegal and beyond. With that, I'd like to thank the CCA for convening us today as we focus on Senegal's economic response and recovery to COVID-19. Together, we continue to support Senegal's commitment to creating pathways to prosperity for her underserved communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Thanks once more for sharing the great work USADF is doing. Allow me to highlight that Mr. Glenn is the President and CEO of the US African Development Foundation, the US government agency which invests directly in Africa's small- and medium-sized enterprise and community organization. As he just described, they have done a lot of great work throughout the continent, and Citi is proud to call them among our partner in supporting entrepreneur in several countries. Mr. Glenn, it was a great learn about how your organization has adapted and evolved during this pandemic to continue its strong support to African organization. Now, I would like to turn it over to Mrs. Jenny Lacy from DAI to moderate our estimated panel. Jenny, over to you.
If I could, Vivian, we need to now go to the minister. I'll jump in. Minister Hutt, we're so pleased that your connection is back. And so, we give the floor to you before we turn over to the great panel. Thank you, Minister Hutt.
Thank you very much, Lazir, for this opportunity and to Glenn and the USADF for the great support that is being provided to Senegal in partnership, in particular, with DARE. So, allow me first to thank everybody for joining us in this very important discussion. As you know, the COVID-19 pandemic has had a profound impact on the world. Hundreds of thousands of people lost their lives. Millions became jobless. Supply chains have been disrupted and outputs have fallen, creating an uncertain environment worldwide. Africa has not been spared of these consequences of the pandemic. The COVID-19 has also affected Senegal's economy, despite the outstanding work done by our government, as mentioned earlier by Vivian, and the outstanding work also provided by health workers to manage this crisis, which led to exceptional results, with Senegal being the number two in the world and number one in Africa in terms of managing the crisis as indicated by foreign policy. Since the first reported case, the government has quickly taken strong actions with a comprehensive also economic and social program of about $1.6 billion. This is equivalent to 7% of GDP, one of the highest programs in Africa, to upgrade not only the health system, but also to mitigate the economic and social impact on the life of the crisis, on vulnerable people, but also on our diaspora that has been badly affected. The COVID-19 crisis has minded us of our priorities and is leading us to a repositioning of our economy around health, food security, pharmaceutical industry, digital transformation, the development of local and regional tourism sector, in terms of also strengthening the social protection and providing a greater role for the private sector in all the sectors of the economy to lead the next wave of growth. These new goals are integrated in this Senegal Emergence Plan, which has a Priority Action Plan, which we have adjusted to take into account of what we've learned during this crisis and which we now need to accelerate in implementing to support our economic recovery in these uncertain times. Our President, His Excellency Mackisal, will preside over a presidential council next week, Tuesday, to validate this plan. Senegal expects under this plan more foreign direct investments and international partnerships to implement this agenda. With regard to international partnerships, it's a priority for His Excellency Mackisal and the entire government to strengthen the economic and trade cooperation with the United States, based on our, based on US foreign direct investments in partnership with our local private sector, in addition to all the ADA, ODA that the US has been providing to Senegal through USAID, through the MCC, and also even through the USDDA. For instance, we have recently signed a $500 million MOU with the US Exim Bank. The first initiative under the MOU is a rural electrification project, and there are also several other projects, either under EPC plus financing, with the government therefore borrowing the funds, or via PPP models with US companies, and we have those in the pipeline. This partnership with the USA is an important opportunity for us This partnership with the USA is an important opportunity for us to create jobs locally, to foster skills transfer, to facilitate a capacity building opportunities, and this is crucial to us. To fast-track also the recovery, we need more partnerships of this kind, and this is the right time to invest in Senegal. As you may know, the country's economic growth has averaged 6.6% over the last five years, with also oil and gas resources. Our economic growth is expected to be around twelve to thirteen percent in 2023, with the development of major projects with, for example, British Petroleum, and to stabilize around seven percent for decades after that. This means more purchasing power for people, for the people, more consumption, more services to be provided to be provided to our consumers and therefore opportunities for US companies to develop sustainable partnerships with Senegalese companies. In our recovery plan, we are expecting that the private sector will contribute to over forty percent of the required financing, and that financing is expected to be more than $26 billion over the, over five years. In the agricultural sector, we have an ambitious program to become self-sufficient in rice production and to produce our, to reduce our dependency also on imports, including through PPP schemes to increase rice production, for example. In the health sector, we are significantly investing in rehabilitating our health infrastructure through building new Level Three and Level Four hospitals. These projects can be realized under PPP formulas and will enable Senegal to become a leader in health services in the ECOWAS region. Finally, on the pharmaceutical sector, we have crafted a strategy for developing a local and competitive pharmaceutical industry. Projects in this sector include reinforcing capacities of existing players and promoting local champions. We have ambitious goals of producing thirty percent of all our needs locally by 2030. South Africa, for example, is at around thirty to thirty-five percent. The plan also includes setting up innovative financing mechanisms, a guarantee mechanism for SMEs and large enterprises for their investment plans to increase access to funding in priority sectors, target financial and technical support for the informal sector, to formalize more the informal sector. We also putting together a fund, a facility, to prepare projects in strategic sectors because we want to be able to give to investors ready-made projects with all the studies done, all the capital structure prepared, the financial model ready, so that we can move ahead with implementation as quickly as possible. Last but not least, business-friendly reforms will be implemented as well to make the private sector the key driver of growth going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Excellency Minister Hott. Thanks for sharing the great perspective on Senegal economy recovery from COVID-19. And I would like to reiterate and retain one of your statements. This is the right time to invest in Senegal and also your appeal to the US companies to develop a sustainable partnership with Senegal. Florrie, if you allow me, we may want to turn it over to Jeanne to moderate the panel.
Absolutely, please do. We look forward to an exciting discussion of economic recovery in Senegal. Thank you.
Perfect. Jeanne, over to you.
Thank you, Vivian, for the introduction. My name's Gina Lacy. I'm a senior private sector development and trade specialist with DAI. We're an international development implementer that works with US government as well as other international donor organizations to implement economic growth and education and other projects. Thank you, Minister Hott and C.D. Glenn for framing our discussion today. I'm very excited to be moderating this panel. We have a very distinguished group of public and private sector actors. And we're going to talk about today Senegal's recovery post-COVID and the opportunities for enhancing business, trade and investment and partnerships. On the panel, Minister Hott will stay on as part of this discussion. We also have Alain Aboubesi from the Infrastructure Investment Platform, Africa 50, if you'll turn on your camera and your, and your mic. Anthony Welter is joining us from the Millennium Challenge Corporation. Jim Dutton from Bactel Corporation, which is the largest construction company in the US. Gerard Moussary from British Petroleum is also joining us. Just procedurally, we're going to go through two rounds of questions with the panelists and then open up the floor to questions from the audience. So in your chat box, please do send questions as we're having this discussion and indicate your, your name and your organization and who you would want to, to direct your question to, if that's relevant. Just to kind of set the stage and, you know, as we all know, COVID-19 has significantly impacted all of our lives. For example, we're doing this session remotely this year and not face-to-face like we normally do. And it's really changing how we're doing business. As the Minister Hott mentioned, it's disrupting supply chains, distribution channels, changing consumer spending behavior and upsetting trade relations. Despite Senegal's success in, in handling COVID-19, it has significantly impacted it economically. The IMF is predicting that the economy in Senegal will contract 0.7% this year and affect really important sectors such as tourism, transportation and hospitality. With all of these changes in mind, though, it does also present significant opportunities to to innovate in the trade and investment space. For example, as businesses are looking to diversify, their sourcing origins might look at Senegal for the first time in different sectors. And it also presents opportunity for embracing digital and digitally enhanced, enabled trade. So what I hope in this discussion that we can focus on is, you know, how, how we can, as public and private sector actors, come together and rise to this challenge and really innovate and allow this to strengthen our trade ties. Just to kind of kick off the discussion, Minister Hott, you talked about Senegal repositioning its economy, strengthening local supply chains, embracing foreign direct investment and needing for more partnerships with the private sector. Can you tell us what you think are the critical success factors in implementing this recovery strategy in the near term? And maybe also in the long term and how US government agencies and initiatives can, will, can and should contribute to this strategy?
Thank you very much, Lacy, for the, for the introduction. And I just wanted to also thank our other core panelists, some familiar faces such as Alain, but also Ngero, who are very familiar with Senegal. I see also Bactel is there as well with their major projects in Senegal. I wanted first of all to emphasize that the growth this year is expected to be minus zero point seven. So it's not minus seven percent, it's a zero point seven, which is below minus one. And but with the expectations that the agricultural production will be much, let's say, more important than we had previously anticipated, we're expecting actually that growth number will be better than that we had planned, both together, the government and the IMF as well. So we'll see over the next few weeks and months by November, we'll likely update these figures. That being said, the economic recovery plan that we have fundamentally is based in focusing on certain, let's say, sectors because we learned from the crisis that those sectors have become more important. But it's fundamentally also based on the fact that we expect more from the private sector or more on PPPs and private sector projects led by the private sector in partnership with the government. So we're expecting really from the US government a support, let's say, in terms of doing the reforms. We have a list of reforms that we have to do if we want to be successful. For example, in the health sector, we expect USAID, for example, to work with the government to help reform that sector, for example. We are also hoping that with the USDDA and other institutions, we'll be able to have some funding to de-risk the projects. I earlier mentioned about the project preparation facility, which can do the initial work that is required to attract the likes of Africa 50 and others to come and co-develop, let's say, with the government. In the same way, USDDA provided some grant resources to the Sovereign World Fund and the oil, the petroleum, National Petroleum Company, which is Petrosan and Senele, to jointly develop a gas infrastructure project that is very critical, but we're expecting also to attract other investors even during the development phase. We are also, last but not least, really expecting that all US, let's say, government agencies will be able also to work together to each bring what, what their capabilities are so that we can, at the end, achieve a blended, let's say, finance mechanism to make the PPP projects, let's say, more affordable, in particular in the health sector, in the tour road sector as well. We have a major project with Bactel, for example, on a tour road. And we are hoping that actually the funding will not be only from the private sector, but we will have concessional resources, grant resources to blend in so that the tariff that we will end up having will be actually a very interesting and affordable tariff for the population or to reduce the subsidy that the government needs to, needs to provide. Thank you.
Thank you, Minister. Perhaps as a good pivot to ask Alain Anthony Welter from the Millennium Challenge Corporation, how MCC in light of what Minister Hott was just commenting on, how donors and different US government agencies can contribute to success? How is MCC utilizing its compact and new initiatives to contribute to post-COVID economic recovery? And in, in, in general, and in Senegal in particular?
All right. Great. Thank you. So MCC's investments have enabled many of our partner countries to obviously create an environment that's not just helpful for current and former, you know, economic development situations. But now we're trying to create that environment where in the post-COVID-19 world, they'll be able to address the issues coming out of the pandemic. As we've seen and know throughout this, this current crisis, health and the economy are extraordinarily linked. And as MCC's focus is to reduce poverty through economic growth, you know, part of that economic growth is clearly directed towards impacts in the health, healthcare industry and sector. So MCC's country-led programs are structured to build capacity in our partner nations and invest in the kind of long-term sustainable development that will help create the necessary conditions to promote economic revitalization and job creation. And in this case, as the pandemic concludes and subsides, we should be able to see, you know, those changes impact and expedite growth in the countries we've invested in previously and are continuing to invest in. You know, and part of what we're trying to do is create those long-term policy and institutional reforms so nations are better able to serve their citizens long after our compacts or threshold projects take, take effect. You know, and unfortunately, some of the most economically vulnerable regions of the world, many of the regions and countries that we operate in are probably the ones that are going to have the most long-term effects from the pandemic and, and their recoveries will unfortunately be longer than probably many of the Western countries. So these are, this is why the work that MCC is doing is so critical. And so let's turn and to look a little bit at Senegal in particular. The first compact MCC had there ended in 2015, and it focused on strengthening the country's agricultural productivity and expanding access to markets and services. The program focused principally investments in road network and essential irrigation schemes in both the north and the southern regions of the nation. In late 2018, MCC in Senegal signed the $550 million Senegal Power Compact with an additional $50 million contribution from the Senegalese government. The second compact will likely enter into force next year. Unfortunately, there have been a lot of delays to the process. I think we're optimistic we will still be able to do this on that timeline. And of course, because MCC has that five-year clock, we're very sensitive to, to these nations and not starting a compact at this point in time in the event that, you know, we're going to lose time simply because certain projects can't be executed on that timeline. But, you know, we're optimistic that things will turn and we'll be able to continue that work, hopefully to help that, you know, sort of catalyze that investment. So this, this compact will be focused on strengthening the power sector to meet the growing demand for reliable electricity by addressing the high cost of and the low access to electricity in both the suburban and rural areas. So the compact is going to be comprised of three projects. The first, titled The Reform Project, is valued at around $47 million and will build on participatory electricity sector planning process and aims to improve the overall governance of the sector by strengthening laws, policies, regulations and so forth. The second project, the Access Project, valued around $63 million, will increase electricity access in the agricultural areas of the south and central regions by extending the electrical grid in selected areas, in areas that currently have high economic potential but suffer from low connection rates. You know, again, trying to strive to get that economic impact that will, will drive job and wealth creation. Finally, the biggest portion of this is the transmission project valued at a little over $400 million. It'll strengthen and increase the reliability of Senegal's high-voltage transmission network in and around the Greater Dakar, thereby stabilizing electricity production and transmission throughout the country. Ultimately, the Senegal Power Compact aims to help the government of Senegal ensure consistent and affordable access to energy to its people. This will allow business to grow, catalyze private sector investment, increase productivity and employment, and ultimately support diversification and growth of Senegal's economy. You know, our analysis estimates that we will be benefiting 12 million people over the next two decades with these investments. So this should be helped, this should greatly help the Senegalese businesses and households and ultimately contribute to their recovery in the post-COVID environment.
Thank you, Anthony. Alain, to you, how has Africa 50's fund been impacted by COVID? And what strategies are you employing in light of the recovery that the government of Senegal is, is supporting more broadly and in Senegal in particular?
Well, thank you, Gina, and also thank you to Florrie and the CCA for this opportunity to participate in this very important forum. And my warmest greetings to my dear brother, Minister Amadou Hott, and of course to the other panelists as well. Let me speak first about what we are doing across Africa and then focus on Senegal. You know, at Africa 50, we are convinced that the infrastructure can play a major role in promoting economic recovery since it's a major growth catalyst. So what we have recommended so far is that stimulus plans, including the plan that Minister Amadou just described, that they should include a large infrastructure component. And we at Africa 50, we are, we are ready to contribute with our capital, which is not very big, but we have some. But more importantly, with our project development expertise, in order to help create a pipeline of bankable projects that are ready to receive long-term funding. And I'm very pleased that Mr. Hott just discussed the possibility that Senegal will create also a project preparation facility because this is quite needed. We do have a solid pipeline of projects today. What we are doing, we are focusing on projects that do the most for, to stimulate economic activity, create employment and provide opportunities for suppliers, especially local suppliers in the infrastructure value chain. Our priorities so far have been energy, transport, midstream guys and ICT. But now we are actively looking at the possibility also of supporting health, infrastructure and internet connectivity because internet connectivity, because these sectors have become very urgent sectoral priorities in Africa due to COVID-19 pandemic. Now, let me step back from a macro level. I think one of the key success factors for post-COVID recovery plans is really raising significant capital to fund the stimulus measures, including infrastructure. That's also one of the things that Mr. Hatt has mentioned because the amounts that we are talking about are huge. Across Africa, African finance ministers have talked about $100 billion a year, which is required over the next three years. So this is a lot. This is a lot of money. But there are a few things that we can do to help raise that capital. First, African countries, including Senegal, which is already doing that, should continue to negotiate with external partners, MDBs and DFIs, when possible, commercial lenders as well, to negotiate debt moratoriums, restructuring, to create fiscal space because the countries need the fiscal space to be able to do a bit more. Secondly, I think Mr. Hatt also mentioned that countries should try to attract investments, very focused on attracting investment from outside Africa. But I would also argue, even equally important, mobilizing domestic resources, regional resources. Because for me, a focus on mobilizing domestic resources will send a very positive message from Africa to the world that the continent is proactively trying to contribute itself to funding recovery while we are also seeking help from external partners. So we should do two things in parallel. One of the things that Africa 50 has been promoting to help mobilize domestic resources is asset recycling. We discussed it with Minister Hatt. Under this framework, basically, government can unlock the capital that they have invested in profitable infrastructure assets, such as toll road, power plant, airport, etc., fiber optic network, by offering this asset to private investors under concession schemes. So the freed-up capital could then be used to fund new infrastructure for the recovery, especially in the health sector. So this kind of new thinking, a fresh thinking that are required today, I am pleased to say that the African Development Bank is backing this thinking. And again, I discuss it with Minister Hatt. I hope that we can implement his transaction of asset recycling in Senegal fairly soon. We also need to focus on mobilizing capital from external investors globally, but also within Africa. Now, African institutional investors, they have about $1.8 trillion. It is estimated by the African Development Bank of asset under management by 2020. Now, if we can get just a small fraction of these resources to fund infrastructure, I think we can close significantly the gap. Now, in Senegal, let me focus on Senegal quickly and say that, first of all, His Excellency President Makisa has shown great leadership in promoting long-term economic development. And this has translated into Senegal's very strong response to the crisis. I mean, they've done fantastic. Of course, it's challenging, but this country has really done fantastic. Now, Africa 50 is already helping to support the recovery with our ongoing investment in the energy sector. We are eager to invest more. I must say that under the great leadership of His Excellency President Makisa, very ably assisted by excellent ministers such as my friend Amadou, Senegal has created a conducive investment climate which really facilitates our work. We can talk from experience because we have invested in two power plants in Senegal, one of which is already supplying much-needed power to Senegalese people and businesses, is producing power. The second plant, which is called Malikunda, is under construction. It has created jobs, construction jobs ongoing, and this is working. Finally, we are also looking to contribute to the Senegalese gas sector, which is set to transform the economy. I'm quite excited about this. And I think I discussed it, Africa 50 interests in investing in midstream gas infrastructure with His Excellency President Makisa and also with Minister Hatt. We want to help implement President Sarr's vision of leveraging Senegal's vast gas resources to support the country's industrialization. These type of investments have high stimulative effect. We are eager to speed up the investment structuring phase because we can spend too much time structuring. Let's speed up the structuring phase so we can start spending real money on this project as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. I want to turn to Jim Dutton from Bechtel. What is Bechtel's Africa strategy as economies are starting to reopen in general? And then what are your priority sectors on the continent in general? And then digging down a little bit to Senegal in particular?
Well, thank you, Gina. And can I add the same sort of thanks that others have given for including, to Flori and to CCA, for including Bechtel in this event and me in particular? It's a privilege to be here. Thank you. And to Minister Hatt, Minister, you've already mentioned Bechtel, and I know you've met several of my colleagues quite recently. Unfortunately, I haven't met you yet. I hope to put that right in future. So thank you very much for including us in this. Gina, you kindly mentioned earlier on that Bechtel is a very large engineering company in the United States. I mean, just very briefly for others, we're a worldwide company. We cover the whole field, a lot of energy, renewables, oil, gas, downstream chemicals, and in recent years in particular, a lot of work on LNG. We cover all forms of infrastructure, roads, rails, ports, airports. We have a mining and metals business, and we have a civil and military nuclear business. And we do project management, master planning, and city planning. In Africa, at the moment, our concentration is on infrastructure, energy, and on master planning. Now, to answer the question of what we're doing as economies reopen, as we start hopefully to move out of the COVID phase, our aim is to contribute to the recovery plans that every country has, focusing on the areas of greatest need. Our aim is to work in partnership with the governments, and the title of this event is a really good one in that respect, to identify those priority areas and then to help fulfill them. Infrastructure development is the way to kickstart economies. We all know that. And that's true in Africa, as in the rest of the world. We in Bechtel have lots of experience in this over the years, and we aim to use that experience, working in partnership with customers to find the best solutions. Of course, we'll look at all the factors, political, especially being sensitive to and sometimes coordinating with the electoral cycle, which is of course very important. The financial factors, where we can propose relevant solutions and deal with the providers. And of course, our bread and butter, the engineering, the procurement, and the construction, actually building things. And of course, this is where our master planning skills can come in as well. We've done a lot of that around the world, including in Africa and in the rest of the world. Particularly, good example being our longest-running project, actually in Jubail in Saudi Arabia. But closer to home, our 10-year engagement with Gabon in West Africa. And of course, working recently for the MCC on a master plan project for Cote d'Ivoire, which is just completed and reported out. Now, all this, turning to Senegal specifically, all this applies to Senegal, where, as you've heard, we're working with the government and with other agencies on a motorway project and also exploring areas in which our extensive gas experience could be beneficial, early stages of that. We aim to match our proposals to the customer needs. And for that, of course, collaboration is vital, not just at the outset of the prospect, but at every stage of the project with dialogue and feedback to ensure that we absolutely understand each other and continue to do so at every stage. I talked about kickstarting the economy with infrastructure. There are two main parts to the kickstart value of infrastructure development. First, of course, is the boost it brings to the economy and employment. Building and all the associated parts energizes the local market. Our business model in Bechtel has always been to employ local companies and local people wherever we are in the world. And by local, I mean truly local, not international companies with a local branch. This provides employment, training, upskilling, and of course, leaves a legacy then of more empowered, higher-skilled companies and workforces. And then the second part of the kickstart value is, of course, the value that the project itself brings, be it a road, a port, a railway, a building, whatever. And of course, that value is only realized when the project is completed. So we are always looking for innovative and technologically advanced ways to complete projects as expeditiously as possible so that that can be realized quickly. Especially, of course, the revenue generating parts. We're always looking for the fast-track approach. So in conclusion, we understand the requirements, the circumstances, the challenges of working in Africa on large infrastructure projects. We recognize the value of them, the importance of them, especially in this emerging from COVID phase. And we've got the resources and capability to overcome those challenges, and we're looking forward to doing that in Senegal. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Jero, a similar question to you on what BP's strategy is in Senegal as the economy is roping? And if you want to speak to more broadly, the trends on the continent as well?
Very good. Thank you very much, Gina. Apologies, I had some connectivity issues there, but it looks like I managed to make it just in time. And my esteemed minister, and thank you to all of the panelists to accept me on this eminent panel. It's a pleasure to be with you. Let me start by saying how proud we are to be an investor in Senegal. Senegal is an amazingly stable country in a very volatile world. And it's a country that has achieved very high performance in quite a few areas. We talk about economics with sustained growth around 6%, 7% pre-COVID. But also the Thailand pipeline is quite impressive when you look at the universities and the achievements in those areas. And on the medical front as well, as we see from results with COVID, but also in research. And, you know, prior to COVID, Senegal had distinguished itself as an eminent country in terms of medical research. Senegal also has this huge advantage to be well-connected to the sea, so to the rest of the world, but also into West Africa and its original hub. And, you know, thanks to the effort of Bechtel and others, we will be even more connected to the hub very soon. But Senegal has access to over 300 million people in the West African market. And therefore, for us, it's a really important country to be present in, and we feel very privileged to be present in Senegal. Now, our strategy in Senegal remains pretty similar to what it was when we moved into Senegal through acquisition of some licenses. It's about developing some world-class gas resources. We have two licenses in Senegal. One is called GTA or Grand Tortue Affmymim, which is a cross-border offshore gas development, just on the border between Mauritania and Senegal. And the other one is Yakar Teranga, which is 100% in Senegal, also offshore. Now, Grand Tortue Affmymim is a partnership, similar to Yakar Teranga, with Cosmos Energy, Petrocent, and SMHPM, the two overseas. Yakar Teranga is with Petrocent and Cosmos Energy. And I just want to acknowledge the amazing work this partnership has achieved to date, which is really important as an international investor. You know, we have experienced that working with other international investors, but also with a national company and the government, has been very fruitful. And also especially want to thank our partners in the government during the times of COVID, which has disrupted considerably the supply chain. You know, partners can get tested in terms of trouble, not when everything goes well. And, you know, we're riding this storm together, which is fantastic. In terms of the two projects, what are they going to bring and how can they be of interest to investors? Well, first of all, GTA is on track to produce gas in 2023. It's a world-class project, so this will be obviously important revenues for the state. But it's also a source of domestic gas, which in turn can feed into the gas value chain, whether you're thinking about power or you're thinking about fertilizers of all sorts. Yakar Teranga is still in evaluation, and we're making very good progress talking with the government. We are very much thinking about building a domestic gas project, which obviously requires more integration effort with all the other parties. And that's why it's very pleasing to hear Anthony talk about the MCC efforts around the transmission lines. But similarly, the fact that PPPs are present in Senegal, as Minister Hatt was saying, is very significant. Because as you develop a gas value chain, this type of partnership, everybody brings one piece of the jigsaw, and bringing them together is what makes the gas value chain really effective. So our strategy is pretty much, you know, on track. It has had to adapt to the disruption because of COVID, obviously, with some delays on the project. But nonetheless, the strategy is firmly on track. Now, I would like to finish with an opportunity. As we're moving along and maintaining the same strategy in Senegal, BP is going through a big strategy change of its own with the energy transition. And it's a very exciting time for us. And you probably are familiar with BP moving from an IOC to an integrated energy company, which means a company that will be closer to its customers and able to provide an energy mix that are, you know, cheaper and more affordable and greener solutions. So we are right on track for that. And this should allow us to get to net zero emission by 2050. Now, the reason I mention this is not just for advertising for BP, but it's because this goal is shared by many. Many on this call, certainly by the government of Senegal. And already, we are talking with them in terms of what we can do together in this field. And I hope other investors will take notice because, you know, this is, I think, the start of a great opportunity for Africa. Gina, back to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jero. Minister Hatt, clearly, this Senegalese government has been partnering very well with the private sector as we've heard from comments from Bechtel, from Africa 50, and now from BP. What in your experience has been some of the best practices and highlights from these partnerships and their contribution to your recovery goals?
Thank you very much. We've been doing very well, as the other panelists mentioned, but there is still a lot to be done, in particular, in having more reforms that will facilitate further the investment of the private sector in the country. That is why, for example, the PPP law that we've been developing is nearly done. We are hoping to go to cabinet in the next two to three weeks and to parliament definitely next month. And to simplify the process, to make sure also our local private sector also is involved. And we want to develop projects where the international partners will really partner our private sector in terms of whole investing in the project company, for example, but also in terms of executing the project itself. And by doing so, provide some capacity building along the way. And this is really what we expect. This is what BP has been doing, funding even, let's say, institutes that will train Senegalese in the petroleum sector. And this is also what we expect from Bechtel when we develop further this motorway project and other projects we can do in Senegal. And in terms of the expectations from the private sector, we are hoping that in the agriculture sector, which is really now a big driver of economic growth and which is also strategically important and as shown by the crisis, we would like to attract more US companies in this sector, in the pharmaceutical sector as well, in the manufacturing sector. The crisis has shown that countries like the United States and others need to diversify their supply base. You cannot just rely in one area. And if there is a supply chain breakdown, then you end up having difficulties or paying prohibitive prices. That is why we are ready to attract US investors that want to build a manufacturing base in Senegal. We've developed special economic zones with incentives. And what's more important also, we have within government, you know, the people that can negotiate a fair transactions that are flexible enough to really think also out of the box so that we can achieve a particular project. Whatever the execution of a particular project requires, we are ready to bring the right people, the right advisors, the right skills to have this flexibility, to have the right decrees, the right... to have this flexibility, to have the right decrees, the right laws to make sure that important investors that have big investment opportunities into our priority project are able to strive and make it happen in Senegal. And last but not least, for the US investors, my really suggestion to them would be to work with the US government to make sure that more concessional and semi-concessional money is available to reduce the cost of funding for us. Because we want to blend in cheap money, pure private sector money that is driven by returns, it's very important. Some commercial loans as well, but also very concessional loans so that the tariff is affordable, so that the project is competitive. And that will give an edge to the US companies, like other countries are doing in Asia. If you look at, for example, South Korea, their Exim Bank has the same constraint as the US Exim Bank in terms of OECD rules. But they managed to provide very long-term funding, because the government provides a separate facility that may not depend on, for example, OECD rules. And going forward, we want the risk premium to be reduced when it comes to the government borrowing from the Exims of the light. You know, the premium is so huge. Whether it's US Exim, whether it's the French BPE or anybody in Asia, of course, except China, the premium is too expensive. We cannot keep paying those huge premiums while we manage to not pay it with other providers. So this is really what I want to suggest to US companies to work with the Treasury Department there, the Congress, to come up with a package that is designed to meet also our requirements. We want also to make sure that, for example, the DFC is able to provide longer-term financing to the private sector in PPP projects to make the PPP affordable. So that the government will not borrow, but will have a PPP transaction with US investors and African investors, Senegalese investors together. But the debt provided, for example, by DFC to be really very long-term debt, very cheap debt, again, for the project to be competitive and more bankable for the population. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Minister. Ellen from Africa 50, I wanted to give you an opportunity to maybe respond to some of these comments on, you know, the need for longer-term investments and how Africa 50 is rising to meet these needs. You're on mute, Ellen.
Mute. Let me unmute my mic. Thank you very much, Gina. Well, look, I think I totally understand the point made by the minister. In order to have, especially in my sector, sustainable infrastructure, I think the cost of capital is extremely key. But what I like to focus also is on some of the things that we are doing really to partner with other entities to support not only Senegal but also other African countries. But I'll talk from Senegal. I think, I should say that partnering is really a key to Africa 50 mandate. This is why African United States actually called for Africa 50 several years ago. I just realized that many people may not know Africa 50 in one word. We are an infrastructure investment platform, which is today owned by 28 African countries, including Senegal. These countries have capitalized us, but also the African Development Bank and two African central banks. But they have given us the mandate to focus on private sector PPPs and projects that are really, really, you know, generating impact, but also, of course, a fair return for investors. Because as Minister Hott said, it's so important to have to mobilize private capital. So what we do know is that in the infrastructure space, we haven't seen as much private capital in Africa as we would like to see. If you look at the numbers that the Infrastructure Consortium on Africa presented in 2018, out of $100 billion of investment in infrastructure, governments, African governments actually provided a large share, 37 billion. Private sector share was only 12 billion out of 100 billion. So this is too small and we need to find a way to increase it. This is where Africa 50 country can help. But for us, the key is partnership. We need to find a way to work together with others. I think we can act as Africa 50 as a bridge between various stakeholders, governments, they are shareholders, but private sector entities as well, together, we can deliver this kind of impactful investment and hopefully trying to reduce the cost of capital by seeking financing from the cheapest sources. Long-term financing is so important. We are particularly helpful, and I have to say that in the area of project development, startup capital, project development expertise, it is so key to be able to build up the pipeline of bankable project. I know that there are actually a number of funds that are looking at investment in Africa, but also in other emerging markets, I should say, but they just don't have enough bankable project that will be ready to receive some of their funds. So at Africa 50, we can help in that area and every stage. But our contribution is not limited only to early stages. We also do later-stage investment. One of the things that we also do, and you know, it's important to governments, especially Senegal as well, we need to make sure that the government priorities are taken into account in the way we design projects. And if it means that we will partner with the government, including the sovereign wealth funds of the country, FONCEES, so that together we are co-shareholder of a project with others, that also is a way to make sure that government priorities are included. We did it in the case of Malikunda, where Senegalese is a 10% shareholder, but also in the case of an hydro project that believed in Cameroon called Machigal, where the government is also shareholder. I like to emphasize the fact that it's very important to also have the participation of the local private sector and also local insurance investors to be co-investors. I think Minister Hott has talked about it here or in other fora, but I think this is very important, not only to, certainly to President Makisal, but also to his government, to make sure that we have local investors also involved. Now, in Senegal, we have done a couple of projects. I mentioned that power project Toben and Malikunda. But we are also interested in doing ICT project and we're working with the government to discuss some of them and also midstream gas. And I was very pleased to hear what Jérôme from BP said about the midstream and downstream gas, because we need to increase the penetration rate of the gas that we have in Africa into our industry, into our economies. And I think this is also the vision of President Makisal. Now, Senegal was one of the first countries to start with IPPs, independent power producers. So this country has the enabling environment to enable private participation. Another performance of this country, Senegal today has achieved a renewable penetration rate of over 30%. Very quietly, they don't talk a lot about it, but it's a great performance. We should talk more about it. I mean, all of these solar projects and wind, they're financed by the private sector. This is happening today on the ground. What we need to do though, is to do a bit more of those, as Minister Hott said, and do them faster. Because sometimes it takes way too much to develop this project. We need to figure out a way to actually to develop this project, and the key is project development. Now, since Anthony from the MCC is also on this panel, I like to mention that we are discussing a possible partnership with MCC to provide technical and financial support for project development, very key in the infrastructure development process. We will leverage our respective resources and funding and also help bring global impact investors to help actually build more bankable project. And hopefully, we can do this, including in Senegal, because this can only be done in MCC-compact countries. And we're very pleased that this kind of partnership actually can be put together, because early-stage project development is so important in order to build the pipeline of bankable project and also support the developers to actually do the work so that we can have more project off the ground. Thank you.
Thanks, Ellen. And that's a good segue to Anthony to talk a bit about how MCC is, its approach to partnering with the private sector and respond to some of the initiatives that you're doing with Africa 50 and others.
Thank you for that. And actually, before I talk a little bit more about private sector engagement, let me just jump off what Ellen was talking about there. So what I'll share in our sort of blended finance programs is we are looking, you know, in short, to crowd in private sector investment. So one of the things we're developing, we have three things currently we're working through, is what we're calling the Millennium Impact for Infrastructure Accelerator, or we call it MEA, which is designed to spur impact investment in these bankable infrastructure projects. So essentially, we want to attract that impact capital by developing these bankable infrastructure deals with measurable social and economic impacts by creating the conditions for traditionally under-financed sectors, such as in water and sanitation, health, you know, certainly in this COVID environment, and education. So that we can get that kind of, you know, investment that will make a difference with the security of MCC being present in these environments, because they know there's a degree of, you know, with the institutional support and structural reforms that we can bring in engaging with government, there's a degree of security and safety with those additional, you know, with that additional support. So we're proud to be partnering with Alan's group. And we hope and we're expecting to sign an MOU in October, mid-October, and then be able to more formally announce our launch of this, as well as the other programs we're working on. So from a private sector engagement, really, obviously, it's never been more critical than right now. As we've been talking about for years and a lot of the development community, there's really $5 to $7 trillion needed on an annual basis to support sustainable development goals. It's clearly a, you know, major delta there between what governments are able to currently provide in this, either as investment or as grants, and what the private sector then would have to make up. And so that's where, you know, we're looking to develop more of these public-private partnerships. So we're doing this in three ways at MCC. One, we're creating an enabling environment for private investment. Two, we're employing these blended finance tools, like the one I just mentioned. And three, we're building partnerships throughout the corporate and nonprofit world. MCC is identifying and addressing policy and institutional reforms to improve that enabling environment so that the private investment is desirable and is, excuse me, safe in these partner countries. One example, in our first Malawi compact, we introduced a new policy and legal framework to stimulate additional investment in their new power generation and expansion of access to electricity. This led to the development of the nation's first independent power producer deal. We're also looking to make more strategic use of MCC's funding to mobilize private finance through some of these tools that we were just mentioning, as they provide an opportunity to scale up development finance. So MCC is looking to serve as a dealmaker, a builder, and a catalyst for these types of projects. As a dealmaker, MCC brings the transactions and these PPPs to market that meet international standards. For example, in Benin's port of Kotenu, which serves as a gateway for trade to several landlocked countries in the region, MCC's investment helped create PPP between the government and a private container terminal operator there for a long-term concession to operate at their new south warp. As a builder, MCC strategically invests in public infrastructure. And as a catalyst, MCC provides strategic financial and technical advice, training and knowledge transfer to create a pipeline of investable opportunities. Finally, MCC recognizes that businesses possess invaluable technical knowledge. That's why we're so focused on collaborative partnerships to share expertise, technology, innovation, and resources for learning capacity building or the joint creation of a program. MCC is a small agency and we're trying to have an oversized impact. And we can't do that just with our own staff and technical skills. We can provide, again, that framework, but we really need the private organizations to come in and help bolster this. And to Jim's earlier remarks, this occurred with Bechtel as we focused on a national infrastructure master plan for Kotovar, which we're just celebrating sort of the conclusion of. In fact, this is the third time this week Jim and I have been on one of these calls. So but it's building on the deep infrastructure experience on the continent and Bechtel's global expertise in integrated master plan development implementation. And we're working with Bechtel and looking at other places where we can execute these in the near term. But none of this can come together unless we can ensure accountability. And it's not just about accountability for our partner countries. It's about accountability in our case to also the American taxpayer and how these dollars are spent. So we collect and we publish data on all of our investment, allowing us to track progress towards targets and to give confidence to the private sector that if they're working with us, there's a degree of success that will be available. And just a few months ago, MCC was once again named the most transparent agency in the US government. We get to blended finance specifically. So we've practiced blended finance since the founding of the agency. As I said, again, mentioned, we've developed a new blended finance strategy and are seeking to deploy these tools, such as guarantees and public-private partnerships, to increase leverage in transactions. We're also seeking opportunities to collaborate with the new United States International Development Finance Corporation. And that'll be one of those three I mentioned earlier that we'll be announcing in the near term. In addition to better support the integration of blended finance tools and MCC's grant programs, we recently adopted a new institutional investment criterion to encourage MCC's country teams to identify, evaluate, and pursue opportunities for blended finance at the earliest stages of the compact development process. So while MCC's investment criteria already require teams to consider ways that a compact could support an enabling environment and crowd in the private sector and other partners, the new criterion builds on this and will direct our teams to identify opportunities to employ these tools at the earliest stages of compact development. In short, we're not looking to go halfway through a compact, identify a need and try and fulfill it and then leave a partner potentially on after the five-year window. We want to bring our partners in before the compact start date. We want them to be a partner throughout the five-year process as much as possible and make sure that they have the support that they need to continue their investment and hopefully create a hospitable and enough environment that they'll bring additional investment even when our compacts conclude. Thank you.
Thanks, Anthony. James, as one of the two private sector organizations, I'm curious to hear your thoughts on what initiatives and policies are of a priority for Bechtel? And you know, how you see that as a way of moving forward post-COVID?
Thanks, Gina. And in answer to that, initially, I would say we've very much heard some of them already, but maybe I can just expand from the point of view of Bechtel on one or two of them. I mean, if you're going to come into a country for, and here we're talking about large infrastructure projects in general for Bechtel, I think the principal thing that's needed is a strong decisive leadership and a political champion. And of course, we've already heard from that person in Senegal, that is Minister Hott. And he is providing that strong decisive leadership and he is the political champion. And that gets everybody, that gets us all off to a good start. Now, private sector, as we've heard, obviously, private sector engagement is critical, but it is governments that take the lead, drawing on the experience of the private sector partners. And again, Senegal has done this and shown the way to other countries where, other countries in Africa where we have some dealings, not all of them, but some of them at least, tend to keep the government and the private sector apart, certainly at early stages, which makes it difficult to bring things together later. I think the other thing is alignment between the various arms of government and the company involved from the very earliest stage. We talked about collaboration on the previous round of questions. But I could give multiple examples. It would be inappropriate to do so in this forum. And where we have advanced our discussions with an infrastructure ministry in a country only to discover at a relatively late stage that the finance and economic ministries were either largely unaware of the project or claiming to be. That, of course, is not happening in Senegal, which is an exemplar in this sense of bringing it all together from an early stage. But discussions in silos just don't work when we're talking about projects at this level and of this complexity and magnitude. Full alignment from the outset will also help speed up the process. And that's particularly important, as I mentioned in the first round of questions, in the COVID recovery period, when we want to get on with this and we want to build things to gain the benefit of the product at the end. On funding, it seems to me that at times like this, governments can acquire external funding, including EC funding, export credit funding, perhaps more cheaply than using private equity with the high contingency allowance. Now, others on this panel are much, much better, much more qualified to talk about this than I am. But any lender, wherever they come from, is going to assess the overall risk. And when sovereign credit ratings are reduced, there is a tendency And when sovereign credit ratings are reduced, there is a tendency, I think, for ECAs to lean in more so than, than otherwise. And we in Bechtel have a, have a close relationship with all those lending institutions. So having us as a partner can be helpful because of the reputation of the company. It tends to mean that if we're involved, it tends to mean that the project is real and that it will be completed. So our presence reduces risk, which is, of course, good for, for financiers. Of course, there's always risks. There's always going to be risks, but we have the experience to be able to better manage those risks that do occur. Minister Hott talked about the, the varying terms and conditions that come from different ECAs around the world. I think we can say that we are absolutely with him in, in wishing for more flexibility, as much flexibility as possible, from USXIM and, and indeed, all, all the other institutions. So we can certainly agree on that point. Just on structuring the project, I think it's got to be structured correctly from the outset. Again, all these things have to happen from the outset. We in Bechtel, we, we can deliver, we, we can work with any delivery method that's appropriate. Ultimately, of course, the key is how the investors get the return. So we can help give a better understanding of the pros and cons of each of those delivery methods. I mean, for instance, ECA funding will rarely, if ever, be appropriate as the sole source of finance because all ECAs, however flexible they may be in comparison to others, require a proportion, very often a very high proportion, of source country content, which clearly conflicts with the desire, and actually often the legal requirement, to use and increase local content and employment. Also, there are some countries that tend to see PPP as something for nothing. And whilst PPP is often appropriate, widely used, and we built PPP projects all around the world, it will only work if the investor sees a worthwhile return and that the project is, is worthwhile and bankable in the first place. So the consequence of this is, of course, the delivery method solution is nearly always a hybrid. And again, I think we have the experience and context to advise on that. So in summary, what initiatives should, should the government take? Well, strong leadership, whole of government involvement and buy-in, partnership with the private sector, and structuring the optimum delivery method. And again, just to, I have to say, Senegal is an exemplar in that respect. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Jero, same question to you. What do you see as the, the key priority policy issues from the BP perspective?
Thank you very much, Gina. And I have to say, it's really hard to follow everyone on this panel now. A lot of very good points, actually, but I will do my best. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge that a lot of really good things are happening, like we see in Senegal across Africa in terms of government responses to the crisis. And if you talk to investment fund managers who deal with big products in Africa, they, they, you know, they're feeding back that they see the governments really engaging and looking to simplify and accelerate projects, which is actually absolutely the, the right response. So I was reflecting on what else could governments do to, to help with this economic recovery. And I was reflecting on how much of the trade, you know, it's only, I think it's only 5% of the world trade is with Africa. There's so many talented people in Africa creating innovative startups, but how can they access the market, you know, how did access market? And, and in particular, let, if you even forget the world trade, if you think about just trading with your neighbor, only 15% of Africa trade is with, interstates within Africa. So how can we improve trading so that all the creative power of startups in Africa can actually access markets? And that's really important in a continent with 54 countries. Now, some efforts are being done now with the free trade agreements, and I think that should be really encouraged in the same ways in, in the energy world, where BP is, you know, interconnectivity of the grids. For example, the West Africa grid is partly connected, but any progress in that area will really help lower the cost of, of power. Same thing with pipelines. I think there's only two international gas pipelines in Sub-Saharan Africa. So creating this connectivity will help all the African companies generate trade within themselves, which is, seems to me abnormally low, and, and that, that's probably a first prize. I won't labor the point on finance and funding, because that's been made very, very well already. But I would, with your permission, link it to something that His Excellency President, President Makisal has said many times around the risk perception of Africa. And, you know, there seem to be an Africa risk factor. And, you know, I've been here long enough now to know in 54 countries, in thousands and thousands of projects, every project is different. And with the improved connectivity and platforms, and, you know, when we see such, you know, the Africa 50 Group and all, all the forums, it's very important that this message goes across. In BP, you know, we, we pride ourselves to have innovative funding solutions. And, 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 you know, we think that, that is something that should be really encouraged as well. The third point would be, and it's something that's been mentioned already, but maybe with a slightly different angle, I think it's the regulations. For us coming to Senegal was, you know, bigger known initially as, as an oil and gas company because this country was, was new to producing hotter carbon. And it's been brilliant, actually, working with the authorities. You know, we've been working in partnership in terms of formulating this, this regulation framework to, to good standards. But it's also, it could be, I would say, a risk factor for many investors into Africa if the regulations are not, let's say, completely transparent and standardized. There's probably a price there, but also for African investors creating startups. In Senegal, they have created this accelerated process called the Guiche Unique, where you can just quick, quickly create a company. And I think all this type of process to simplify regulations would, would definitely, you know, help. And I think many countries are going that, that, that way right now, but that's something to really encourage. And finally, I would say, for me, there's a point around partnership and integration that has been also mentioned, but certainly we feel it very, very strong in BP. We, we're very fortunate with our partnership, and it looks at other people on the call reflecting the same quality of partnership in Senegal. But that, that's fundamental, especially in a much more complex world. And I would just refer to the world of energy, because that's someone I'm most familiar with. The world of energy is becoming far more complex with energy-mix solutions being required. If you want to be competitive, you need to have a low cost of energy because that supports the whole industry. And to do that, the equations you need to resolve are much more complicated because they have more variables. Coal or oil or gas or renewables, and this is changing all the time. Therefore, having a way to integrate and analyze all these solutions to really focus on reducing your cost of energy is, is going to be really important. And if you can integrate that then with proper value chains, for example, in the gas, it would be around, you know, feeding into agriculture, then you, you create a very solid basis for, for industrialization. I, I just wanted to finish with one last point. That's something that I'm reflecting a lot on now, and, and, and I hope it resonates with, with, with some of you. It's the change that's happening now with COVID and so many people working from home. It strikes me that there's so much young talent in Africa that is looking to show what they can do everywhere in the world. And with this homeworking thing, it doesn't matter where you are. And so I really hope that, and I've certainly made the call in BP, but I really hope the big global companies realize that it's far more easier to have a diverse workforce with this homeworking. What prevents big companies to hire people from Africa these days? If you work from home, you can work from anywhere. So I do hope that is going to be this kind of flexible. The market will, let's say, take the best of the bad situation we have and innovate around liberal market and that this can create also solutions for, for younger Senegalese talents. So thanks very much, Gina, hard to follow you guys, but back to you.
Thanks, Jero. We're going to move now to some of the questions from, from the audience. You know, we've talked a lot about the higher level of partnerships and, and moving forward. One thing that we haven't covered is, you know, COVID has most impacted marginalized groups and, and those who, you know, really had, had the least ability to work remotely, to your point, Jero. So this is a question from Danny Murphy from Deliver for Good Campaign. She asked, how, and this is to all of the panelists, how are you ensuring that women are included and benefit from different recovery plans? And I would expand that maybe to include other marginalized groups that maybe may not be able to work from home.
Maybe I'll, I'll take that one first. You know, for, for Senegal, even before the COVID-19, we have had many, let's say, laws and instruments to support women entrepreneurship. As you know, in Senegal already, at the parliament, we have 50%, women, 50% men, that's by law, and it is definitely respected, it's there. We have set up some agencies that are providing funding to youth and women, but with majority of women. For example, there, that Mr. Glenn mentioned earlier from USTD, TDA, TDF, they, their focus is really on, on women. This is why the president set it up, so that they can provide sometimes grant funding, but often concessional funding, where, let's say, microfinance institutions lend at 20% or banks lend at 12%, 11%, there will lend their money at 5%. And often also to women working in the informal sector. And as part of this recovery plan, we have, we will set up lines of credit that will be managed by there and another agency, Fonge. And both of them really work very well with, with, with women. And during the resilience program, which is, that we launched immediately after the crisis started, you know, the microfinance institutions and Fonge, for example, provided a lot of funding to those microfinance institutions at a very cheap cost so that they were able to lend to women at, let's say, 8%. Myself, I visited in the northern part of the country associations of more than thousands of women that are in an association and they get funding to really support them in their activities. And, and often it's like small loans, you know, it could be as low as, you know, $1,000 or $200 even, but that will enable them to really do some economic activities and make profits, whether it's in trading or in transforming, let's say, agricultural products and making very good profits, actually. This is really to talk to thousands, hundreds of thousands of, of women. Of course, it's not only that. We have in the, in the formal sector as well, several women CEOs who are running their own companies, working for, for corporations. And we provided funding so that many people don't lose their jobs, of course, including women as well. So we are very mindful on including everybody, in particular, women and the youth as well.
So, so Gina, let me, I'll touch on that briefly and also on the connectivity issue that you raised. We, we at Africa 50, we're really a big promoter of gender diversity. Actually, if you look at the entire staff, I think we are about 50/50 gender diversity at Africa 50. And if you look at our board, I think we have 33% of our board, female. Okay, of course, we want to get to 50%, but 33% is, is already a good, a good performance. If you look at the board of, of global companies or even in more, lots of developed countries. What we do in our project, we don't necessarily have a, a program or investment targeted at women specifically. We fund large projects, but we, we try to get our partners to see how we actually run our company where 50/50 gender diversity, and we impress on them that actually is good. We value diversity, we showing that, we demonstrate what diversity is in terms of gender. And so that's how we actually approach this, this very, very important topic. I should say, on connectivity, and we have seen, the pandemic has demonstrated that really very starkly that those that were not connected couldn't do much. I mean, so, so we need to figure out a way to connect, to have a connectivity rate of almost 100%. So that's why, one of the reasons why at Africa 50, we launched our innovation challenge to try to tackle the last mile connectivity, internet connectivity in Africa. And we receive about 60, 600 solutions globally. Actually, almost 80% of those solutions, proposed solutions, came from Africa on how to actually to increase the connectivity of Africans, especially who are remote areas and, and also those in cities which are not, who are not connected. So we would select the winners and we will do the pilot in Rwanda. And then hopefully Senegal could be next, having discussed that yet with my, my brother Minister Amadou. But we need to figure out ways to, really to make sure that almost everybody's connected, especially because in Senegal, under the leadership of His Excellency Makisal, ICT is such an important sector. And Senegal, we, we stand ready to support the vision of President Makisal, it being implemented by Amadou in that particular sector as well.
If it's okay, I'll go and jump in real quickly here. So supporting women's economic empowerment is an integral part of MCC's mission and has been since the agency's founding now, almost 16, 17 years ago. Because you simply cannot grow an economy if you leave a population out. And whether it's women or other disenfranchised groups in these countries, we strive through these governance reforms to provide a fairer and level playing field for all, all, all people. And that's an intrinsic part of our scorecard, whether it's, you know, the health and welfare, but it's, it's access for women to, to, you know, have the same standards for business operational ability, ownership of land, et cetera. And so we've had a lot of successes as, as developing these as part of our compacts. Just actually, probably just a little less than a year ago, the agency working with the government of Morocco was able to make some major changes to inheritance rights. And so women can now inherit property and they can build their businesses. And, you know, it was, it was a great success. And those are the kinds of things that MCC is looking to do. Because as we look to the healthcare sector as we recover here, women need to have a participating voice in how that's going to look going forward in these countries. Hopefully, the things that we're doing will infect in other places where we don't necessarily qualify to operate at this moment in time. And certainly with these private-public partnerships, you know, that's a, you know, way to catalyze that sort of change as we create that infrastructure from a governance perspective. Also say, to jump off what Alan just mentioned regarding ICT and data access, we also recognize in the, the importance of that and are looking internally in some of our compacts, how in time, you know, that needs to become a part of what we'd like to do. But given that right now, that's sometimes driven on economic reform, sorry, economic analysis. And sort of sometimes it's, we're looking, you know, agriculture in some countries is still a, a low-hanging fruit piece to try and drive development. We're looking to the private sector and coordinating with, like, Microsoft Airband Group right now in a couple of places on how we can help them get the governance support that they need to have the confidence to roll out some of their programming. And so we've had meetings with Google and some other companies over the, well, prior to COVID, and we're trying to continue those dialogue so that we can say, even if we're not necessarily going to roll something into our compact, how can we support investment in this very area? Because it is so critical to drive access, digital access in, in these regions at the most lowest levels. People just simply have the ability to be, have the, have the knowledge to, to build out their businesses and do things in an innovative manner. And that will help level that playing field for all disenfranchised groups. Thank you.
Maybe if I can just jump in there, Gina, yeah. Very, very good question. Actually, my 21-year-old daughter was asking me exactly the same question yesterday, and maybe give me a bit of time to think, so I will thank her for this. But it's, it's a very tough question, especially in our type of industry. But it's a very big focus for us because in, you know, we're present in 70 countries as a company. And for us, the diversity agenda is absolutely paramount. It's very clear, we need in tune with the world and we need to make sure that, you know, all, all views
It's very clear, we need in tune with the world and we need to make sure that, you know, all views in our company represent is a good representation of the world, otherwise we will be out of sync. So we have about 38% of our workforce is women at this stage, which is a steady year-on-year improvement, but it's not enough. And we're working very hard on this. It's more difficult in some areas and others, especially, for example, in the offshore oil and gas for various reasons. But it is very much a priority for us and that is at all levels of the company. It's a very interesting link to the question of flexible working. And it is very true that flexible working doesn't work for everyone. Especially young mothers can actually find it quite impossible to work from home. And we have actually found that to be truly flexible, you can't impose a flexible solution to everyone. You have to have a constant dialogue and make sure people speak up. And what we do in BP Senegal is we've done a survey, basically. And this is how we have a 50% workforce in Senegal, actually. So female workforce in Senegal, which is better than the group. But we have noticed that flexible working or remote working does not work for everyone. And therefore, it's very much a case of making sure everybody's voice is heard. And that, you know, you might put a policy in place for most, but you will need to make sure that those who can't have alternative ways.
Jim, did you want to make a response?
Well, Gina, just very quickly to save you some time, because I'm sure you want to get in more questions. So I mean, just very briefly, I would associate myself with everything that's been said. But Bechtel is a worldwide, completely diverse company. When I ran a project in Gabon, we had 23 different nationalities. I'm not sure what percentage of women, but there were a lot of them, especially the local Gabonese employees who formed the bulk of our workforce. The Crossrail project in London and underneath London, at one stage, certainly 50% of the engineers, the engineering function were women. And that just happened to be at that time. It wasn't artificially produced. Two of our four very senior leaders, two of our four business units presidents are women at the moment. So we're completely diverse, but I'll leave it at that. So it's time for some more questions.
I think we have time for at least one more question. Ambassador Oates, you've received probably the lion's share of the questions, so you're very popular. This one, I think, is very insightful from Amadou Diop from the Millennium Connect Africa. He's asking, you know, you mentioned in your opening introductory remarks that digital infrastructure is a key component to the new economic recovery plan. Can you talk a little bit more on that piece and dig a little bit deeper into what the digital infrastructure plan looks like in Senegal?
Thank you very much. First of all, we had a law to support startups, but the decree to implement it hasn't been done yet. And we are going to fast track it so we can support more startups in the digital area, number one. Number two, the government owns a lot, a big, let's say, infrastructure in the telecom space. And we need to concession it. We already have found a private sector partner, so we need just to see it through and implement it so that that huge, actually, infrastructure that we spent a lot of money on is wisely used and hopefully that will bring the cost of broadband down, which is very important. And number three, there is another project in the, let's say, with the postal office. Because in Senegal, in like in many countries, we don't have street numbers. Let's say the houses don't have numbers, so it's very hard, let's say, to deliver, to develop e-commerce. And we would like to fast track also that plan. And then another area that I can mention is really boosting e-government. We have had many plans in e-government, we made some inroads, but there is a lot to be done. Digitalizing, for example, the land registry, you know, from other, let's say, services that the government provides to make sure that you can access them just using your phone. Those are some of the things that we will, that we will work on. But we are also open to having PPPs with the private sector. If somebody has a very good idea on something that can improve the life of the citizens or also generate some income for the government and for the private sector, we are open to those ideas as well.
Thank you, Minister. This one is for Bechtel, for Jim from Ali Khan at Aztec Industries. Can you give an update on the Bechtel Road project status in Senegal and how it may have been impacted by COVID?
Yes, indeed. I mean, we had a team in Senegal with Minister Hott and others the week before last. So we are developing the proposal to put to the government. It was a successful visit two weeks ago. A lot of it depends, a lot will depend on the financing method. And we've talked about blended finance and we've talked about different sources of finance on this. And I think now is not the appropriate time to go into that in any form of detail. But there's certainly a meeting of minds between the governments of Senegal and Bechtel on how we would wish to do this project. And the next stage is for us to put in a formal proposal, which will follow shortly to the government for them to assess and we hope to agree on or certainly to negotiate on. But Minister Hott may want to add something from his point of view as well.
Absolutely, it's spot on, Jim.
Thank you.
Maybe we have time for just one more. Minister Oates, this is from Mamadou Kane from the embassy in Senegal in DC. I would appreciate if you could speak more on Senegal's plan to attract investment, US investment in the healthcare sector in particular.
Yes, I mean, there we are already discussing with US companies, especially in PPP transactions, building hospitals. But also we engage with the DFCs to see how DFC can provide the debt financing for those projects as well. And the discussions are ongoing. We have identified a few opportunities and we are hoping that we will go fast on them. But also GE is involved in those discussions in terms of providing the hospital equipment that are required as well. And the government is very keen really for the health plan to have a blended finance, let's say, kind of scheme with DFC, with USAID, to not only help build the hospital, but also help reform the health sector. Because we are not keen to put in more money unless we are also reforming so that we can have better results. We already have a good results, but we do not want to stop there. We want to be even more efficient and democratize the access to health services and build, let's say, health centers in many remote areas also of the country.
Thank you, Minister. Well, just to wrap up, I mean, we've covered a lot in the last two hours. You know, some of the key points that really struck me is, you know, the importance of strong decisive leadership to promote partnerships, both public and private partnerships. And, you know, looking at Senegal as a fantastic example of this kind of partnership and what's possible in engaging public and private partners. The importance of enabling environment and the need for, you know, support to governments to implement enabling environment reform, both from the public and from the private sector. And, you know, the need to really align governments and have more of a whole of government approach. And finally, just the need for longer-term investment schemes that are less short-term thinking and looking more on long-term. I want to thank all of the panelists for their participation and knowledge and insights that they've brought to this discussion. And I'd like to invite Florie to give some closing thoughts as we close today's session. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gina.
Yes, well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. As I said earlier, I'm Florie Lizier, President and CEO of the Corporate Council on Africa. Thank you so much for joining us on the third and final day of CCA's 2020 UNGA special sessions. A special thanks to our keynote speakers, His Excellency Amadou Hott, Minister of Economy Planning and International Cooperation of Senegal. So good to have you, so glad you were able to get your connection going, Minister. And to CD Glenn, my good friend, President and CEO of the US African Development Foundation. Thank you to our board member Vivian Bakayoko for providing welcome remarks, to Gina Lacy for her excellent moderation, and to our esteemed panelists for such an engaging and compelling conversation and as well as to a number of our members who sponsored this event. We were delighted this week to host these events on the sidelines of UNGA focused on the theme of partnership for economic recovery in Africa. Our discussions of what is happening in Morocco, Nigeria and Senegal were all meant to showcase the ways in which US and African governments and their private sectors can partner to create a pathway in this never-traveled-before-COVID-19 pandemic era. These three thought-provoking sessions reminded us of the following. As a community, we have faced and overcome previous challenges and that we will overcome this one as well if we continue to work together, US and African governments, as well as our private sector partners. The public sector can leverage the power of the private sector in the right environment. And I like that today we touched on the role that Africa's youth, women and innovative capital and technologies can be empowered to play a part in the continent's economic recovery journey. Before I let you go, please know that CCA will continue to engage and support our member companies and US and African public and private sector partners as we all work to develop solutions for economic recovery and resilience in this new era. Though our series has come to an end, the topic at hand certainly has not. Thank you again on behalf of CCA for a fruitful discussion and wonderful way to end CCA's Partnership for Economic Recovery series. Please stay well and have a great weekend.